Good evening. This December 6th, Monday, December 16th, 2024, regular meeting of the Board of Education, Wayne Westland Community Schools is called to order. First item on the agenda is 243.25, Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. We have a couple students here, Alexandria and Josephine Martin from Hamilton Elementary School. Thank you, and I believe their principal, Kelly Michaels, has a few words to say.
So I am proud to introduce Ms. Josephine Martin. She is from Mrs. Green's fifth grade class. And when Josephine grows up, she would like to be a veterinarian. She lives at home with her mom and her dad and her sister Alexandria. And her favorite thing about Hamilton is that, what was it? It was the teachers and the staff was yours, right? Yes, and this is her sister Alexandria. And when Alexandria grows up, she'd like to be an artist. And she lives with her sister Josephine and her mom and dad. She is in Mrs. Snyder's second grade class at Hamilton. And the thing that she likes best about Hamilton is that our mascot is a star because that means we're all stars. Okay, wait, we're gonna do a picture. Ross, we're gonna do a picture. Here, Joe, come here.
Has there been two people before?
Yes. Come out here, and then look. Alex, you stand by the side.
All right, next item on the agenda is 244.25, roll call attendance. Ms. Heinz?
Ms. Ebony Mitchell.
Present.
Dr. Weaver.
Present.
Ms. Heinz, present. Ms. May.
Present.
Mr. Neal.
Here.
Mr. Cox.
Present.
President Gray.
Present.
Seven, zero. Everyone is here.
All right, the next item on the agenda is 245.25, recognitions and presentations. The first item is building update from Hamilton Elementary School from Kelly Michaels, who was just with us.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for letting me be here to share some things about Hamilton Elementary, which I'm obviously very proud of. So again, I'm Kelly Michaels, and I am the proud principal of Hamilton Elementary. We serve about 460 students every day, and about 19% of our students are receiving special ed services. And we do serve young fives to kinder- or to fifth grade students. And about 3% of our students are receiving multilingual services. And you can see our breakdown of our ethnicity there at the bottom. I am very, very happy to report that our staff are combined 567 years in teaching. 52% of our staff have been at Hamilton for 10 or more years. So I'm very excited about that. We have a strong family there. And 71% of our staff have been there six years or more. And six of our staff members are Wayne Westland graduates. We also have, five of our staff members bring either their grandchildren or their children to Hamilton as school of choice. So I feel like that's a good thing to acknowledge, too, that they feel that they can trust us with their children. So we also, something that's unique with Hamilton is we choose to spend our Title I money with two reading interventionists, paraprofessionals that is, and then our behavior coordinator and our attendance secretary. And speaking of attendance, we're working really hard to improve that. And we have 85% of our students have attended 85% or more of each school day. Our attendance secretary has been a big help with that. And also, a big thank you to our staff who've done an excellent job reaching out to parents, building a relationship with students, and really encouraging that strong attendance. And as you can see up there, 92% of our students are on time daily, which is a change from the past. I don't have the exact percentage from the past, but we were really battling a lot of tardiness. And 13 of our students have had perfect attendance so far for the year. We are addressing some of our students who are struggling with attendance. We've had parent meetings where we create a success plan. Our attendance secretary is making phone calls. And we look at what are some of the barriers to their poor attendance, and we work together to support that. And then for our students who are having good attendance, we do recognize them through our monthly PBIS assemblies. We have necklaces that students earn charms for, and if they have good attendance, they can earn a charm there. And certificates go home each month for perfect attendance. There we go. Okay, so student well-being, as I said, our teachers really work very hard to build relationships at Hamilton. And that's definitely at the heart of all that we do. Our teachers take time each and every day to greet students. And research does show that students who are greeted daily before entering the room have a 20% higher engagement percentage and 9% reduction in behavior issues. So our staff came together and felt like this was something we needed to present school-wide, and they've done that at specials. And every class students are greeted before they come into the classroom. And every teacher makes a positive contact with students' families by mid-October every year. It might be a one-on-one conversation at pickup, a phone call, a letter home. But they take the time to make sure that they've connected with each and every family in a positive way by the middle of October. We also focus our SEL lessons. You can see that we have our Zones of Regulation up there. And that's another school-wide practice that came out of our PBIS committee. And we teach those self-regulation strategies proactively through our monthly assemblies and classroom activities. And then... There we go. We don't stop at supporting the student with our SEL practices. We look at our students and families at a whole. And we look to support the needs of the students and the families all the way around. We have a pantry at Hamilton that is, we support them through food, hygiene, and clothing supplies, also school supplies that we've gotten through our Gleaners donation and our church partners that help us to stock that, as well as some of our families that donate clothing and hygiene items in our Student Council, which is called the Cosmic Council because we have the stars. They do hygiene drives, too, to help stock our pantry. And we do have two social workers that support our students and our behavior coordinator that supports our Gen Ed students through proactive SEL lessons and calm-down strategies, social skills, things like that, to support some of those behaviors. And then we also partner with the National Kidney Foundation so that we have family resources that help teach healthy habits. So we look at both their mental wellness and their physical wellness. Hamilton is school-wide PBIS. And we have our Star Behavior Expectations that you can see up there. Stay safe, take responsibility, be a leader, always do your best, respect people and things. And those skills are taught school-wide. And our, we're also a school-wide Do- Class Dojo, where that's a password-protected app that all of our students' families are connected to so that we can communicate with their families and every teacher that is or staff member that's in the building. And we give our positive and negative points around those Star Behavior Expectations. And it also is our, one of our main ways of communicating with our families, whether it's about an event or a behavior issue, or also to share those positive things, too. And parents get a weekly report for this. So we connect our Star Behavior Expectations with the Dojo. And students who have 85% or higher positive points get to participate in Fun Friday activities, which is a variety of things. It could be where they do board games. And we've put some of our PBIS money into purchasing games that are for group activities. They might be an extra recess or something that the class has voted on for extra time. And then the students who do not earn that Fun Friday, they go with one teacher and they work on a lesson to teach the skill that they did not master that caused them to not reach 85%. And then we have monthly PBIS assemblies. And each month, we look at our Dojo data and our EduClima data. And we look at the areas of need, and then we create lessons that are taught during the assembly. And then we monitor that behavior throughout the month. And we call that our Spotlight Behavior. Students can earn points for showing the Spotlight Behavior. And then if they are the student in the class with the highest percentage of Spotlight Behavior points, they receive a Hamilton T-shirt and an award. So we like to acknowledge the positive behaviors, also in positive behaviors from the lunchtime and hallway expectations. Our homeschool connection, all teachers send minimum monthly newsletters, some do it weekly. And that contains information about events, curriculum, current events in the classroom. And then, as I said earlier, staff make positive calls home by October. But we also do monthly Positive Office Referrals. And that's all staff in the building, once a month, make a Positive Office Referral that is posted in the hallway and then read at the assembly, and then students get to take that home. And again, as I said, we're a school-wide dojo and then the bimonthly smore that is sent out. And you can see some examples there of our news and Positive Office Referrals. And then here for student achievement, you can see there with the chart at the bottom, the blue and the red, that is our letters data. And we are showing a 10% or more increase in our letters data from September to now. So we're seeing really nice growth there. And then in our reading and math, we, our NWEA data, we can see where there are strengths and deficits. One of the things you'll, that report there shows where we are in relation to our grade-level norms. And some of that data is not where we want it to be. But we're looking at our Tier One instruction so that we can really improve that school-wide and work to bring those numbers up. And we're not just looking at growth because we could show our other chart that really shows a lot more growth. Our students are growing. But we're really focused on how many of our students are operating at the grade-level norm because we know that our students are going to be competing globally. So we want to have our students ready for that because, of course, we want, our goal is academic achievement, not just a little bit of growth, but academic achievement. And the Few Points of Pride, our OT and one of our Resource Room teachers, they took on our Unified Bowling Club. And it is a bowling club that is a combination of students who receive special need services and Gen Ed students. And they meet at Hamilton, and they do bowling, and then they do a trip at the end at an actual bowling alley. We have a student-produced, school-wide newspaper. And we've had one out this year, and they, the students interview staff and community members. They choose the content, and they have a staff leader that helps them put it all together. But it is very much driven by the students. And our Cosmic Council, our Student Council, they do all types of community service right now. They are just wrapping up our Toys for Tots campaign. And the students decide what needs to be done. They decide what they'd like to advocate for. And it is, again, very much student-driven. They've done beautification around the school. They've done the hygiene drive, as I mentioned earlier. And then we have daily staff-produced video announcements that are very entertaining. Mrs. Broll can attest to that. And they're played each day. It has some content. It'll be events. And then also, we reiterate our PBIS expectations and our monthly Spotlight Behavior expectation. And then you can see there some of our community partners that support us through donations for candy, for materials in the building. They support our teachers by providing lunches a couple times of the year. So those are some of our community partners. And that is it. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Do you have any questions from the board? Ms. Heinz?
I just had one question. When it came to the chart with the math, and I just noticed that it just gets declined as higher that they get in the grade level. Is there a reason why it's just declining as it, you know, grades get higher?
I think there's a lot of reasons that that could be. We know that deficits do, the gap gets wider as students grow older. We do a very transient population. So some of our students at the upper levels have never had the instruction that some of our students that had been at Hamilton the whole time. So students that have moved in didn't benefit from the instruction that they would have gotten had they been at Hamilton the whole time. Content, sometimes it just becomes more difficult. The way, when they were younger, the test was read to them versus when they're older and they have to read the test. Even though it's math, they still are responsible for reading that. So if you're a fourth grader, but you're reading at a first-grade level, you still have to read the questions on that test. So that can be a major impact.
Just one more question, too, because I always get concerned with tests, like, if the students take it seriously. You know what I'm saying? Sometimes it gets me going through it just to be like, uh, and not really care. You think that might be some of it, too, sometimes?
I think that that can always be the case. I think that our teachers have done a really good job balancing between not making tests something where you're really anxious over, but also knowing that you have to take it seriously. And one of the initiatives that we've done at Hamilton is to make test-taking just another part of our day so that we're not creating this test scenario where students have to be really nervous that, oh, my gosh, I'm taking this big test. But they also know that there are certain times that they have to work on their own and produce something on their own. So there's, you know, they, I think the teachers have done a really good job balancing that out and helping students to understand the importance of it.
So the main thing is mostly like that literacy piece, you know, working on making sure they understand. Because it's true, like with math, with the question, if the train is going far, you know, you gotta be able to comprehend that. So, yeah, so something we have to work, you know, the literacy aspect.
And on the other part of the data, the letters data and the instruction that they're receiving through the phonics instruction and the systematic instruction that they've had, we're seeing great gains there.
Thank you.
Mr. Cox?
I'd just like to comment, Ms. Michaels, I appreciate that we're actually looking at the percentages of students that are at or above the norm and not just looking at whether or not there's growth from the previous semester. These are the numbers that we need to see. So I appreciate that you're looking at the actual story.
Thank you.
Ms. May and then Ms. Ebony Mitchell?
Thank you. So I have a comment. Thank you for this presentation. A request, I should say, that I have is that I would love to get a copy of the Star News.
Oh, great, yeah, we can do that.
I would love to see a copy.
That's an easy request.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Ebony Mitchell?
My question is, first, I want to say thank you for the presentation. And I do agree, this is exactly what we're looking for, you know? And we appreciate the interim superintendent. When we asked for this content, she was right on it. So it helps us to familiar ourselves on what's going on in the schools. But I do, my question is, what are some of the barriers that you can share about the attendance?
Well, there's a lot. I think that for the student, for my students who are not there on a regular basis, there are significant issues at home that one of the students I talked to today, he said, why do you think I wasn't here last week? There was no one to watch my brother. So he has a 10-month-old brother, and for mom to go to work, he will stay home to watch the little brother. So that's one factor. Some of our parents are dealing with addiction problems. And they're just not in a place right now where they're able to follow through on those things. I can't think of one student off the top of my head that doesn't want to come to school. I think that they love their teachers and their teachers love them. And so being in school is where they want to be. So I think part of it is that. And, you know, some of, sometimes it's transportation. But I would say minimally, it's transportation. When the buses are canceled, we are documenting now when kids don't come to school because of that so that we can look at that. But that's not often the thing. I think it's, we also have a lot of parents that work overnight shift so they don't wake up in the morning. So we've bought alarm clocks to give to the kids to teach them how to set the alarms so that then they can get on the bus and come. But it's a small cohort of the same students over and over. And so the students who are chronically absent, there's typically a mental health issue going on at home as well.
Okay, and so have CPS have had to get in on any of those cases?
Well, we call CPS, but if you've ever had to deal with them, there's not a lot that they do with that. You know, you have, it has to be pretty significant. They don't address poor attendance. So students that I have sent to truancy, they don't go to court for two years. And oftentimes, they've already left the district by the time they come up in court.
Oh, wow. Thank you so much for sharing.
You're welcome.
I do want to say that I don't think we have another school in our district that makes use of their mascot as well as you guys do. I was in your building for the first time last week or the week before for my daughter's Girl Scouts. And there, I don't think I've seen any star, that many stars anywhere except for the night sky.
Yes, we do like that.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Next, we have a building update on John Glenn High School from Scott Kelly.
Amen at the door. All right. Thank you. My name is Scott Kelly. I'm the principal of John Glenn High School. Appreciate, thank you all for having me out here tonight. Wanted to go, opportunity to talk about our school. It is a short presentation. We can't get everything in there. We have a wonderful staff. A lot of them are here tonight. I wish I could share everything that we had to talk about. But I am happy to share some of these things that we have on here now. All right, is this my presentation? This is not my presentation?
That's your presentation?
It's not the one that I shared. All right, all right, well, hey, okay. So we have about 1,373 students in our district. 14, 42% are African-American, 41% Caucasian, 8% Hispanic, 9% Other. Look at our class sizes. Our freshman is the largest. That's generally how it goes every year. We're at 362. Sophomores and juniors are pretty close, 39, 339, 338. Then our seniors are at 328. Our ML students, we're at 108 right now. That number is growing, which is wonderful. And we have some great programs that we're putting in place. We're constantly talking and working with our central office and the district to have ways we can service those kids and get them in and help meet their needs. We're getting quite a few with a lot of different ethnicities, which makes fun trying to use Google Translate quite a bit, which I've really got to use lately, which I am enjoying watching the kids stare at me and have no idea what I'm saying, but we are figuring it out. So we're about 56% economically disadvantaged. We do offer over 90 different classes in the high school. Obviously, we're always looking to expand that, but we're very proud of that. And it's something that we've been working on from a scheduling standpoint. Our attendance, so we were just talking about that. We're at 89.9% attendance rate. Last year, we were very excited. We led the district with the lowest truancy rate. Last year, we decreased it by 17%. There's a lot of things, I think, that went into that. One of the biggest things was our exam exemption policy. That seemed to be a really good motivational factor. For those kids that were kind of borderline, if they're at four absences or less, they could exempt up to two exams. And we kept that pretty cut and dry, that only, only school-related would count. So we're trying to get parents to get in the habit of schedule your doctor's appointments outside the day. Let's make sure we try and keep them in school, try and get that. I have parents calling me all the time, like, hey, I've got to go do this. Is this going to count against them? So we've been working with them on that. We do have some PBIS incentives that we've been doing, working on our tardies. Our tardies did decrease last year. We're continuing to work on that policy. I think that is a, that a fight that we're doing every day. We've been putting in some hall sweeps, working on our truancy programs. One thing that's been really great, I heard you ask about the attendance. Westland Courts and Westland Youth Assistance worked with us last year, and they held a truancy court. And don't tell anybody, it's, doesn't have a lot of meat to it, but we do have a judge that has volunteered this time. We brought kids in. Usually, I think last year, we had between 30 and 40 different kids that came in. And the judge, we sit down, the parents bring them in. We have that opportunity, and it isn't necessarily, it's not a gotcha, we're going to do this, but we work together on developing a plan. And I've been very, very happy with it. If we can get the parents to bring the kids there, there's been very positive. I have kids that are back in school. When my first year, two years ago, there, there was a girl that had been there for like three days. She had barely missed a day in the last two years. His grades are doing great, and it's all because coming there. So I'm really excited about that. It's hoping something that we can expand on and get going into other communities. It's hard for Westland to work with the Inkster and the Wayne, but they're happy to bring them in. So that's been a really big factor for us and something that's helped a lot. And I'm hoping to expand on as we go. Student well-being, we have, there's a lot of great programs. We do have Phenomenal with our social workers, with our counselors, with our PBIs. We have a lot of different people who are constantly working with our, with our kids. We have check-in, check-outs. We're doing weekly meetings. It's something that's a revolving and constant battle for us. But I'm really happy with a lot of, bringing a lot of parents in, developing plans as a group. It's not just one person or just sitting down and talking. It's lecturing. It's developing a plan along with the kids and bringing our families in and our community. We have an advocacy club, and you can see here, they did some wonderful painting of a shed that's out in the courtyard here, that anybody that has a classroom gets to look at everything. We're very happy about that. They're doing a lot of community events. They meet once a week. They're constantly working on bringing different people in and doing some great things in the building. Student achievement, we're at 89% graduation rate. It's something that is good, but we want to keep on working. We have a lot of good programs, a lot of options for kids that we can get them to the finish line and keep that push and keep them interested in. So we're happy with that, but obviously, we're looking to increase that. In our NWA testing, we did see an increase in proficiency in all grade levels over the last year. We had a 98 participation rate in the SAT, which is something that we're very proud of, getting the kids there. And our attendance has been very good. We've been very happy with that. We're really happy to get on that side of it. We had 68 students took at least one AP exam last year. I would love, there's some great scores on there. One of the ones that stood out is we had 21 of 23 who took our AP lit score to three or higher. That is great. National Honor Society, we're at 52 students. It's increased by eight students. You can see on the right-hand side, we just had the induction ceremony a couple weeks ago. It's a lot of fun. It's really neat to be a part of that. It was all student-led. So you get an opportunity to come to it, those that were there that night. It's great to see, to see the kids leading it and letting them take the role. I was very, very happy with that. 42% students were on the honor roll in first marking period. Again, something that we're really happy about. Obviously, we'd love to see more, but that's, that's a great number considering how many kids we have in the high school. So one of the programs that I'm really excited that we're doing this year that's really great, we got a grant for the district as we're raising salmon in the classroom. And you can see on the left there, I was hoping to show the video because it's pretty cool, but you can see where the arrow is. That's a tale of one of the eggs hatching. I don't have, I can't remember the exact number, but the hatch rate that we had was higher than the state average just over the last three weeks. So the kids get to watch this. The aquarium's set up in the classroom. They're in there every day watching it. You can see on the right, they're looking under the microscope. Seeing the engagement and the excitement in their eyes is really neat. And we're all real excited to see how this program goes. Ms. Steen is a teacher that she has had to work her tail off, no pun intended, to make sure that, getting the pH level, she's coming in on the weekends, had to make sure everything was up and running and get it right. So really excited for all the hard work that she's doing. And I know we're talking about expanding that, and I think we have some of our elementary schools that have gotten involved on that, so doing some partnerships and seeing how that goes in the future. Community partnerships, so we are with CFCU, is in our building. They have a credit union. They come in, they've been, last year, they were a little bit more. They've been coming in once a month, and they're set up right outside our cafeteria. And students can come and learn about banking and talk about credit and talk about savings. And it's really a cool thing. But they did partner up with our art department, and Ms. Cole is here today with one of our students right here, Law Williams. You can see, he, he, he did this painting, partnered up with Tony... Ms. Cole, am I going to say this right? Is it Roko? Roko. Mr. Roko, last year, and it was great. He, they painted this, or Law painted this during the day. And to watch him working on it throughout the day and seeing where he was going and seeing how he worked on it was a really, really cool thing. It is a beautiful piece of art. While he was working on it, we kind of noticed he was squinting. And somebody asked him, he's like, well, I wear glasses, but I broke them and I can't find them. So CFCU, when, when this all got said and done, they paid for him to go get an eye exam, and they paid for his glasses. And it was just a really, really great thing to show how those community partnerships and our and they paid for his glasses. And it was just a really, really great thing to show how those community partnerships and our teachers and students can work together and get the opportunity. I think one of the dads of our art teachers bought this painting. We're working on getting it put up in the front office soon. School spirit, talk a little bit. You know, sometimes you think you get to high school and they lose that fun and that, that great community building in the building. So we, between our leaderships and our student councils, they did some great things. You can see some of the pictures that they've done. Halloween, they absolutely loved it. We only had a few that we had to say, take the masks off. But other than that, they, there was a lot of, a lot of our teachers and our kids dressed up in some of the theme days that we're doing. They're constantly just involved, and it's a really great thing. It's something I didn't put on here. We did an underground spirit week for our teachers a couple of weeks ago. And, and our participation rate around our teachers, even Mr. Henze, did a wonderful job. And we didn't tell the kids. We were all just dressing up in different themes each day, and they're all like, what's going on? Like, why is Mr. Kelly not in a tie today? Why is he wearing flannel? It's hunting season. So it was really neat to see, just to see that, something a little bit different than, than that normal traditional learning that we're seeing during the day, to see the kids interested, involved, and asking questions. It was a lot of fun. Last year, at the end of the year, one of the greatest fun enjoyments that I've had as a principal is that we were able to help award Jamir Johnson a forty thousand dollar scholarship through Big Futures. He was one of ten in the entire country that received this. We had a lot of great, if you go to it on the bottom, there's a link. Channel sixty-two came out and did a great story on him. We surprised him. He had no idea. We had an assembly with all the seniors. We brought them all down, just to, we kind of talked about scholarships and why it's important to fill things out. He had no idea it was getting, his parents were kind of hiding in the corner. They didn't really know what was going on. They knew he was getting something, but they didn't know what it was. So we had, had an opportunity to bring down, you can see that smile that young man has on his face right there. It was, it was well, well worth everything that we do. This is why we do what we do. And to see that and to see the joy in his friends and everybody coming down and congratulating was an awesome, awesome day. Our work-based learning program, so our Pohai kids, these guys are out in the community all the time. And I tell you, it does not matter what kind of day you're having. When you run into one of these kids, they always have a smile on their face. It does not matter what's going on. They are, it's just, it's just a joy. It doesn't matter what kind of day. I know I can go down there and see these guys and know that, that the day is going to turn around. They do a great job. They work hard. They're out in the community. Our teachers do a wonderful job working with them. It's just, it's just a real joy for us to see. So I was going to play a video at the end, but the, the music doesn't work. But our senior farewell, I wanted to kind of end on this. So on the, the last day for seniors, they do, do a march through the school, and then they get in the buses and they go to the elementaries where they, where they started from. And we know it's a joy for our elementary teachers. They get opportunity to see, see the little guys that are here doing the pledge of allegiance and seeing them growing up and graduate. When they come back, we invite all the parents, and they're in the back of the school, kind of surprising the students lined up with their, with their signs and, and all that. And the video was the reaction of the kids on the bus. If you get an opportunity to go to the website when it's posted and click on it and watch their faces and watch, it's just, it's just a great, great day. It's a great way to kind of end the year. And it's something that we're excited about. They, we've been doing it for a couple of years, and they still act surprised. So don't let anybody know that that's what we do. We try to hide it from them. Yeah, it's gonna, it's gonna play. You can kind of see it. It's, it's a minute and a half long. Like, there's. Alright, while you're watching, the next one's, any questions? There we go. We got there.
Ms. Hine?
Okay, so I have a couple. Do you want me to just run through one more?
Go for it.
Okay. So it's just, it's a few, but not bad.
Okay.
So my first one is just around, in the beginning, you talked about the decline in freshman enrollment as they continue or matriculate through. Do you have any idea as to why, or just have you guys looked at that, or just a guess, anything?
Yeah, sometimes it's just, a lot of times it's, some of them end up having to go an alternative route. So with this having WIA and having some, you know, not everybody learns the same way. So that's kind of the great thing is the freshman year, we're, we're kind of figuring it out. And then having that options to keep them still in the school system, but getting them somewhere they're going to be successful. So that's generally why you see the numbers kind of drop as, as you go.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. You talked about the raising salmon and having that grant. Who was that grant from? Do you remember?
That was through the Department of Natural Resources.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. And then I have two more questions. The next one is around the student-led credit union. Is that tied any way into the financial literacy courses that now we have to offer?
That, so it's run by CFCU. It's not student-led on that one. So they do, that is something that we're working on tying in. And with it being a kind of a new thing, we're talking about what are different ways that we can get into the classroom. They do offer some programs that they've offered to come into our classrooms, and we're going to start utilizing that.
Okay, that's awesome. And then the last question I have is just around asking you, what would you say is the greatest challenge? And how can the board be of support?
I think attendance, as, as we all talked about, is, and working on having that consistency. It would be great to have a little bit more resources as far as personnel to make those phone calls. I found making those phone calls and doing home visits are really powerful, and doing those home visits prior to the school year and developing that relationship. So when we do, because we do know the families that tend to fall into those, those things that Kelly talked about, that we start to see, we see that at the high school as well. A lot of times, the parents are looking for support. They don't know what to do. Their kid's getting older. They're just, I'm not going to school. So we're talking about, you know, getting, having the people to be able to make those phone calls, getting those letters out and staying on top of it. That, that would be an area that, that I would love to get some additional support in.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Hine?
I have a quick question. You know how they have the upper bound program at Wayne Memorial? And that certain grant, it goes through like every like four years sometimes. Is there a way you guys are able to apply for? I heard it was like something happened where Wayne applied for it by accident or something. They let it keep going. Is there a way that John Glenn could apply for that grant when it comes back out?
I, I hope so. That prior to myself starting there, I, I understood that something, a deadline was missed, and that's why, why it was law. So I don't know the details, but yes, I would hope to. I, when I was at Ypsilanti, we had upper bound. It was extremely successful. A lot of great things. So I'm hoping that, yeah, hopefully, we have that opportunity to bring them back.
And what I'll do, because the nice thing is I have a really good relationship with the Congresswoman, Rashida Tlaib, and she sends me these e-grants out, and so I'll keep an eye on it. And then maybe even ask, because they actually sort them out for me. So when I get them, I just send them out.
Perfect.
So when I see it, I'll get it out to you all.
Yeah, send them my way.
Ms. Ebony Mitchell?
Well, first, I want to say thank you for present, for your presentation. And I want to say thank you to the educators that's in the room that does this every day with our students. And so my question is about the credit union. So you say the students are able to utilize it and, and do banking? So is it a time that they're allowed to do, or do they ask for a pass to go, or how that works?
We have it set up during lunch, so they can, they can go out during lunch and meet with them. And then some of them have to stick around longer. We write them passes or, or we bring them down, but they come in during our lunches. Generally, it's the time that they're open.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you guys for all you do.
So what happens with the salmon?
Well, you know, we're talking about that. I'm not sure, I don't want to offend anybody in here, but we already talked about maybe having a fish fry. Career tech, yeah, culinary, a little cross-curricular, yes.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Alright, thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
The next item is a bond update from Mr. Toppa.
Good evening, board and community. I would like to welcome Bill McCarthy and Doug Underwood from McCarthy &amp; Smith and Bill Weinrock from TNP. Tonight, they will be presenting and highlighting some of the amazing projects and upgrades that the district has seen in the past six years. So we're really looking forward to your presentation, and hopefully you'll enjoy the pictures and the upgrades that you haven't been able to see if you're not in those, in all the buildings.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. This is extremely exciting to be able to show off some of the work that was done. We had a great partnership with Wayne Westland, TNP, and McCarthy &amp; Smith in two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen with the bond. Just starting out kickoff with the bond and that bond campaign, we, we all did a lot of work on that initial campaign, had a lot of fun, and it passed with flying colors. And with that, we were able to get a lot of work done over the years. So we'll start with the high schools. So that last bond had a, a couple of themes. One of them was security. All of the schools with their secure entrances, we had technology. There was HVAC work, there was some generator work, but a lot of it had to do with safety and security. Obviously, you know, you would keep your roofs and, and parking lots and things like that done. So all the buildings got a little bit of something as we go through, and I'm going to highlight the high schools and middle schools. Each of the buildings, as we went through the process, we, we moved the main entrances and created secure entries for each of the schools. A lot of nice work went into being able to renovate these spaces. Big, big changes at both Glenn and Memorial. Front entrance over at Glenn created a nice space for a career center, college and career readiness. And just going through some, there was also a really nice collaboration with Corwell Health that came into this project. That wasn't part of the initial planning, but Corwell worked with the district and came up with this clinic that was put in at the John Glenn High School, where we'll take some space in the building and create a very nice space for that clinic. A lot of the classrooms, we've got finishes, ceilings, lighting. A lot of the lighting was replaced throughout all the schools, LED lighting. This is just an example of the band, band room at the facility getting new finishes. This project was a STEAM project at John Glenn High School, and this was developed out of some old, really unused, older CTE space in the building. And this turned out extremely fabulous. And from what I understand, the program is fantastic for the children. Over Memorial, front entry. Memorial's counseling. With Wayne Memorial, obviously, you aware that we were able to build a large addition on that building. My experience with the district for about thirty years, we talked about putting a new front entry onto the building with a cafeteria that would connect the building, the main educational building to the theater. We were finally able to do that with this bond. So there's a very large cafeteria addition, band room, vocal music room, and that building really turned out fantastic for the kids. Each of the buildings had science room renovations. This is a memorial addition to the surgery. New entry, now that we connected to the building, we were able to update the theater entrance, and that comes right off of the cafeteria connection right into the theater lobby. Both buildings, this is something that came in through the process. We were able to get some grants with some equipment. And both high schools have a new weight room facility. Memorial turned out fantastic and an old auxiliary gym. Move over to Ford Career Tech. Career Tech had a large addition put on for a new front office and secure entrance. And a lot of internal remodeling, creating the commons. This is a nice gathering place for the kids. Got graphics rooms. New restrooms throughout. A huge culinary arts program upgrade. Basically, everything in this space was gutted and replaced. Brand-new dining facility for the culinary arts. At the middle schools, that same thing carried through with providing our, our, the secure entrances. We went through and did some boiler and HVAC improvements, generators to help support technology, just general upgrades throughout the buildings. This is over at Adams. We moved the main office into what was the music department, so that it was at the front entrance. Franklin Middle School, we took that entry and put in a simple secure entry in the existing lobby. All the classrooms, again, the finishes, light fixtures, paint. Stevenson Middle School, new front entry. With that, I'll turn the building bud.
So good. I'll run through the elementaries real quick. French Associates was the architect for the, for the elementary buildings that we did. The elementary buildings really focused on, again, the secure entries, new gymnasium additions on each of the buildings, so that they were able to separate the cafeteria and the gym spaces to utilize those the way they should be utilized. There were kitchen updates at every elementary school, not additions, but taking kind of the existing space or a couple of rooms together and, and freshening those up with new equipment. And then air conditioning. You had about four elementary schools that previously had air conditioning, and those are the four that we're just now finishing up on. So that kind of prioritized how we went through the rest of the other elementary schools in that we wanted to get air conditioning into all of those buildings. And then, as Bill had said, just like the secondary schools, all the elementaries got new boilers in those buildings and new fire alarm systems throughout the space as well. So here's one of the gym additions over at Elliott. This is the secure entry. Over at Graham, the front doors are to the right. We're actually looking out of the office area into this entry. This is the new, new office. So the door on the right is actually the door that, once you're into the office, they buzz you out that door to actually get into the school. So it's a, a good system for the security. I think one of the nicest things through all of these buildings is the color selections that were made. I mean, it really, really brightened some things up. Bill showed a couple of classrooms over at Franklin. They have the bright yellow, which the pictures make it look really bright, but when you're there in person, it, it just provides a whole new atmosphere for the, for the kids as they go through. That's, all the classrooms got new roller shades in them, so the vertical blinds are down. These are actually a roller shade that still allow some light to get in, but you also have the ability to see out them as well when they are closed. So that kind of wraps up, and again, Big Futures start right here. Any questions?
Any questions? Ms. Hine?
I'd like to say thank you for your hard work. Our buildings are phenomenal. I was able to get some people to do a tour through our career tech not too long ago. I just had a quick question though, with the bond money and like the construction projects. I know, you know, I worked in special projects and construction. The prices are super high. So if there's like tariffs and stuff like that, how will we be able to handle that in the 2025 future with our construction projects?
Well, we are bringing this bond to a close.
Okay.
And we're working with Jules right now. We're, we're pretty much right where we need to be from, from a budget standpoint, which is, is good news. This bond came with a lot of challenges, COVID being the first one that we had to deal with. COVID caused all the escalation in prices that we had to work through. COVID caused all the escalation in prices that we had to work through. And then, of course, the manpower issues to, you know, the lack, the lack of help. So it's been challenging, but we're very happy and, and proud as we finish these things up to, to be able to say we're, we're really right, right where we ended up with, with the dollars.
Thank you.
Ms. Abney Mitchell, Ms. May.
Now, I noticed that a couple of schools that had repair, repairs done, that was not, that was remodeled, that's not part of this bond. And one of them was David Hicks, and the other one was Water, Winter Water? Walker Winter.
Walker Winter, yes, they have not had bond work.
Hicks has bond done. So they, it was up under a separate bond?
Walker was not in this bond.
All right.
Correct. And we'll be in the next one.
Okay, and, but thank you so much, which is, especially with the safety ish, things that has been put in place. And I want to ask you about the blinds. You say that you can still see out of them.
Yeah, so they-
Can you see in them?
What do they call that, Bill? The, no, they're, you're not able to see through, right, on the roller shades?
Yeah.
Well, it's a micro mesh type, type fabric.
Right, so if somebody outside, can they see inside? I mean, I know you can see like shadows and stuff like that, but-
Yeah, you'd be able to see shadows. I don't, you can't pick out a person as, oh, there's so-and-so through the, through the shades.
So they wouldn't be able to find me?
I, I wouldn't think so. You know, the, the vertical blinds, when they were open, yeah, you could see right through. This is a, this is a full shade that comes down, so it's much better.
Thank you so very much. When we go in our buildings, we are so proud. They are beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. May and Mr. Cox.
So I, one, just wanted to echo my colleagues in saying thank you. Thank you to not only your team, but to Mr. Tocco, the decisions that were made in terms of the safety and security and just thinking those things through, right? So just like how you talked about the blinds and wanting to have those types of blinds, but also thinking about the security measures that go along with that. And as a person that absolutely loves color, thank you for the color. I just, I, I feel like color makes such a difference. We want kids to be excited about the places they come into. We know that kids love color, but so often we'll just, you know, for the sake of money. You know, I've been in schools where we only choose beige or white, and so as a former first grade teacher, just thank you for the color.
Mr. Cox.
Thank you, President Gray. I want to address this to Bill McCarthy, just because it seems like we've been in this a couple of times now, and I know that many, many people had to do with this project, but what, what were your, your words, bond challenges? It is just remarkable in my mind that you were able to complete the, this project with the myriad, the onslaught of things that were in the way, not the least of which is not having the help to do the work. The cost of materials going way up through the project, dealing with COVID. I, I knew when we voted to ask McCarthy to do this work that it was because of the experience we had had last time. You just did a remarkable job, Mr. McCarthy. We really appreciate it on behalf of everybody here. It looks wonderful. We're so proud of it, and not a peep out of you, so we really appreciate that.
Well, it was an honor to work with the district again on this project, and as Doug said and Bill said, it's been a great team effort all the way through. You nailed it. There are a lot of challenges. That COVID thing, that, that threw everybody for a loop. But good news, we learned some things. You know, you take advantage of some opportunities, started learning some things. The cost thing was a big deal. We're starting to see the cost. It's not going back down, but the rate of escalation is, is kind of slowed down. So, you know, brighter days are ahead. We're looking forward to the future, and we're, we're thrilled with the work that's been done. Kids need a great place to go to school, and we've made an impact. Thank you.
Thank you. And I want to echo what the other members here have said about how the buildings look. As a parent whose child is now attending the elementary school that I attended, and my mother actually attended, I hadn't been in the school into Wildwood since I left there as a, you know, when I went into sixth grade. And going to that building this fall, it just, it looks incredible. And I got to take a peek at that new gym the other day, and you'd think it was part of the original building. It just looks like it was always there and always meant to be there. So, great work on all this, all of this. Thank you.
I just want to, I, I want to echo, obviously, what the board has, the statements they've made to the, the three individuals that are here currently. But we'd also like to extend our deepest gratitude to the following individuals and organizations whose invaluable contributions played a crucial role in the success of the 2018 bond. First and foremost, the community who voted for it, the Board of Education that voted for it, CBD, French and Associates, TMP, obviously McCarthy and Smith, Baker Tilly Municipal Advisors, Stifle Public Finance, Miller Canfield, and a gentleman who's not with us right now, who has retired, Tony Spiezzak played a major role in this bond. And another gentleman who is here today, who is actively playing a major role, and I want to thank him personally, is Gino Monti. It is his birthday tonight, too, by the way.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
We are looking ahead, and we are excited to begin meeting with various stakeholders in the new year to lay out the groundwork for the 2025 bond, which some of the board members have mentioned, some of the work in some of the buildings that we have not completed yet will be part of that. And we're excited to get started on that. With continued support and collaboration, we will once again achieve great things together. And like I said, we've already started the planning phase of it, and we'll start to include other stakeholder groups after the new year. So thank you, once again, guys, for coming and presenting. It was amazing. Thanks.
Thank you.
Next, we have a, an update on our phone and internet outage. Hi, Mr. Bee.
What's in the bag? What's in the bag?
Good evening to President Gray and the board, interim superintendent Jen Curry, staff, students, and community members. I'm here to talk a little bit about how we've been navigating the cyber attack that we've dealt with over the past few weeks. All right, so just want to focus a little bit about in terms of what happened, where we are now, where we hope to be, the lessons we've learned, and then I want to take a moment to appreciate and share some gratitude with the folks who helped us to kind of move forward. And even though we're still dealing with the impacts of what happened, the teamwork, the patience, the support, and everyone, how they've come together, has been a huge help in terms of moving forward. So, what happened? All right, so on Tuesday, December 3rd, we all received a call basically stating that internet and phones were down. That is not an unusual call to get, get in the morning, get in the middle of the day. So immediately, we deployed our techs to check and see what was going on. We found out as they were trying to remedy the situation that this was a little bit more unusual than anything else that we had dealt with. So we were able to work together to understand the nature of what we were dealing with, as well as the nature of the attack. With that being said, at the time when all of this was going on, there were already students in class, buses were en route. But due to the nature of the attack, we decided, we decided to shut down the systems to make sure we didn't deal with any further damages as we moved forward. With that being said, and the magnitude of the attack, we began to look into what coverages we had, what levels of protection we had. We immediately went to check our insurance policies, and fortunately, we were able to proceed to take care of what we needed to do, to deal with and determine next steps. So with that being said, we worked closely with Wayne RISA, we worked closely with local authorities, and even the FBI and the CIA were involved and at the table. At this point in time, the investigation is still going. And so the systems that were targeted, I think a lot of folks that are in this room know, in terms of the internet was, was disrupted, our communications, our badge systems, the immediate impact of just losing internet and phone, of which we're working on right now, and then the building systems in regards to announcement bells, et cetera. So at this point in time, or at that point in time, our response was to secure the systems and begin forensic investigations. And at this point in time, that investigations or those investigations are still continuing on. Where are we now? So at this point in time, internet access has been fully restored across buildings. Announcement bells, PAs are operational or in the final stages of restoration. The badge system is back working, and the doors locked specifically. The investigation is still going on, but other systems are coming back shortly, slowly. And once again, we thank you for your patience in regards to that. We're in the process now, and we get lots of questions about data and information, but we're in the process now of examining that, and that's a big part of the investigation. Unfortunately, as I've been around the different buildings, folks have asked me what happened, but we're not able to go into the details of what happened, once again, based on the level of investigation that we're dealing with now. And also the fact that we don't want to corrupt the integrity of the investigation as we move forward. So our goal in terms of communication is just to be as transparent as possible, to let you all know as much as possible, and to make sure that we're doing everything that we can to get things back and running and back to normal. All right, so where we hope to be. Very shortly, we hope that all of our systems are fully restored, and that we're moving forward with the results of the investigation. We're looking to upgrade our systems, making sure that we have the latest versions of software and firmware. And then we're working with a group specifically called Surefire that will help us as we move forward to have a report on what's happened and what we need to do in the future to make sure that this kind of attack does not happen to, happen again. Once again, we have, we're ensuring that all systems function securely, excuse me, function securely and reliably, to support our students and our staff. So as we conclude the investigation, we'll be connecting with the folks, and we'll, we'll definitely report out. We're grateful for the folks and the principals, administrators, and unions that have met with us to discuss what has happened so far and what we've put in place. So the lessons learned, one of the things we, we, we always say, we don't want to get ready, we want to be ready. And so what we've learned based on this situation is that there are certain things that we need to have in place. And once again, the teamwork in regards to staff, administrators, everybody, even when we, we looked up, we needed hotspots. Special Ed was giving us hotspots. We were ordering hotspots. People came together to help us as best we could to operate in that situation and in that environment. So, but we've also learned, learned the importance of proactive security measures. And so we're working to make sure that we have the things in place that we need to, to be successful. And as I talk, I do want to talk a little bit about our IT team, which is really, really strong. And we've gotten great encouragement from Wayne RISA in terms of our staff. It's important, even the size of our staff, to be able to deploy and do the things that we've done up until this point. And once again, we realize that we have a ways to go, but we're grateful for how far we've come at this point in time. Our actions moving forward, once again, continue to invest in the Wayne Westland IT infrastructure. And one of the things that really stood out in this entire plan as we're pulling things back together is the fact that we had really, really strong backup systems, that our systems were backed up. So as we're pulling things on, and I think many of you may have dealt with this, your badge didn't work because it backed up till about eight weeks ago. But those backs, backups allowed us to have the information and everything that we needed in place. So a lot of work went on behind the scenes. Once again, different departments regarding assistance with hotspots and those kind of things were extremely helpful as well. But what we've also learned, because even when this happened and we got the internet back up, we got a call from Wayne, Wayne RISA that the internet was getting ready to go down the next morning. Fortunately, Wayne RISA was able to work through that situation. However, the main thing I think we've learned from this situation as we keep moving forward is that we have to be prepared to pivot in all of those places, in all of our spaces. So with that being said, I'm super grateful to work with an incredible team. This is a picture of them, and you don't know how hard it was to get them to come and take this picture. So, but special recognition to them. First of all, thank you all for your patience, your understanding, your support during this challenging time. As a tech department, we're doing our best, working as best we can to, to, to get things up and running, once again, back to, to normal. But once again, we're committed to working with you to help secure the district in the future. I also wanted to give a special recognition and praise to this guy. I don't know if you get to see Jamison DeVal, who is our, our lead director of IT operations and infrastructure. But right now, he is still working to try to get systems up. So I wanted to especially acknowledge him and his work and the things that, that he's done up until this point. With that said, I'll take any questions that you may have, and hopefully I can answer all of them.
Heintz.
Yes, thank you so much for your work. It is greatly appreciated. I worked for a banking system, and we had the incidents with a cyber attack. And what they did is they had all the employees, we had the training, because what happened, an employee clicked one link, shut the whole bank system down for like a week. So we just had to have like that training for the employees to be careful and know like the phishing schemes and certain things. It just took one click to shut the whole bank down.
Right, right. Yeah, and, and with that being said, as we look, as we move forward, specifically folks with higher level access, we probably will be looking at a two-factor process in terms of passwords and other things. So once again, I can't get into too much detail, but we, we are definitely learning on the fly ways to secure the district in better ways, so.
Dr. Reber.
Without going into any active investigation, when do you anticipate our phone system to be up and running?
So, I kind of want to say this, but, but you know, with that being said, hopefully, by the end of this week, looks really, really good. If not, for sure, when we come back from the break.
Oh, yeah, we do have a break.
I think that's a safe statement.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. May.
So I do have, thank you for this presentation and just kind of sharing the information. I don't know if you can answer this question, but you talked about our, looking and finding out about our insurance. Not sure if there was a data breach for student and staff data that's still under investigation. In the event that there is, will our insurance cover the ability for us to offer? It's like, what is that, like that identity lock or whatever that is, where the identity is? Oftentimes, when your data's breached, like companies will give you that identity piece so that they can continue, continue to monitor your data. Is that something that could be covered?
You know what? That's something that I can look into. As, as a, a discussion around what our insurance policy involved, it was more so for incident, per incident. It wasn't necessarily protection for, for everybody based on the results of. So I would have to dig into that a little bit deeper.
Okay. I think that would be nice to check into, just because if that was the case, I would like for us to be able to at least offer a resolution and, or support and not just, hey, your data was breached.
Right, right, no, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Cox.
Thank you. Mr. Beebe, your report kind of sounded a little bit like a guy that has to give a news conference about something he can't talk about. Was this particular attack generated just at us, or is it the software that we're using that was susceptible? Or was it the RISA agency?
I can answer that. Specifically, our school district. And I think there is an uptick in attacks, you know, as we've looked at it. There are an uptick in tax, attacks on school districts and similar agencies where you wouldn't have the level of protection that a corporation would have. And because of that, they know that there's still important data as it relates to student data, our teachers' data. So they're aggressive in attacking those smaller businesses that won't have the level of wall, firewall and those kind of protections in front of it. So I think you'll see more of these kinds of attacks, and definitely the data says that, you know, schools are being attacked more.
So it's our feeling that the data was the, was the focus of the attack.
Sure, absolutely.
Well, we had a presentation just earlier about some of the money that's been spent in the district on safety protocols. And of course, that was, as they said, the number one thing. And in some of those photographs, we showed that we actually have our IT and internet backed up with generators. We don't generate the whole building, but just rather this, because our safety protocols are connected to it. So my, my question is, how are those safety protocols impacted by this kind of a data breach and our loss of internet?
So basically, I, once again, we're very fortunate, and I, once again, kind of go back to the team and the kudos to the team in terms of to know what to do in a short period of time. So it's funny, because basically, one of our texts was literally unplugging the internet. You know what I mean? So it, how fast you move and how quickly you move has to do with how much data that they would get access to. The other thing that helps us from a student perspective- The other thing that helps us from a student perspective is that the student data is sitting at Wayne RISA. It's not sitting on our servers.
Okay, that's cool.
So it's a matter of what servers they attack and what information and what data is on those specific servers. We were very fortunate, as I said before, to move quickly. And now our goal, once again, is to, you know, kind of turn the light switch back on as best we can, you know? And then as you talked about insurance policy, think about it like your home, and this was much the case for this, in that when they, when we started looking at the insurance policy, we were hopeful, but we found out we had, we had really, really good coverage involved in, in regards to an incident of this nature. Very fortunate. And, but we'll be looking at our coverage, and if we feel like we need to enhance that coverage, it may be a discussion of something that we'll need to bring back to you all.
Thank you.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
I just want to say thank you for your presentation and being as transparent as possible that you can be. And, um, safety, you know, is an issue.
Yes.
And, um, you know, it's just not our schools, it's going on around the world.
That's right.
I, I have letters coming in mail to me from Corwell Health about a cyber attack, you know, that my information might have been breached. So it, it, it happens, you know? These people are really smart.
Yes.
And, and, and data is what they want. And I just thank you. I know this is a new role for you. Welcome to your role.
Thank you.
You know, and, um, I'll talk to you later because I don't want to put it on record that, you know, that, you know.
Oh, yeah. Sounds good.
But thank you for wearing orange. I appreciate it.
I know that's your favorite color.
Yes.
So, I will, just the last comment, I would say, I, I think between me and interim superintendent Jen Curry, as we've sat in these meetings, we have learned a ton in terms of what, what's out there and how folks are just, just this predator mentality is, is unbelievable, you know? So, so once again, I think we, we just want to try to do everything we can to just stay safe, keep all of our information safe, all of our kids' information safe. That's the goal.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have an update on the Marshall property from Mr. Toko.
Yes, I know the Marshall property has been a hot topic for the past couple of years in regards to where we at with it, what are we doing with it. I'm happy to say, just recently, we've had two offers on the Marshall property. And currently, we have our attorneys that are looking at one of the letter of interest or slash intent. So we're hopeful in the near future that we could be moving towards a purchase agreement, hopefully in the next couple of months. So it's, uh, looks good in regards to where we're at with that property. I think it's a valuable piece of property, and I think it's going to be exciting for the district to reap the benefits of the property.
Do you have any questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Toko. Next item on the agenda is 246.25, citizens comments on agenda items. I don't have any forms here that are for agenda items. I have a couple that weren't marked one way or another, and a couple that were marked agenda but were for topics that are not on the agenda tonight. So those will all get moved to the citizens comment at the end. Thankfully, the next few sections should go pretty quick, so. If you haven't filled out a form and you're in any of the overflow rooms or in here, just make sure you get it up to us by the time we get to that citizens comment at the end. Next item on the agenda is 247.25, consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Do I have support?
Support.
All right. Any comments on the consent agenda? All right, Ms. Heinz, if you can take the roll.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes. Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
President Gray?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
The next item on the agenda is 248.25, Board of Education Committee Report. Dr. Weaver has a report on the property committee.
The Wayne Westland Community Schools Board of Trustees held a property committee meeting on Tuesday, December 10th at 12:00 PM. Dr. Weaver and Ms. Heinz were in attendance. The property committee discussed the structure of the meetings. The committee discussed the current offers for the Marshall property. The committee also discussed upcoming meetings, determined the dates would be scheduled on a need basis. And interim superintendent and board members shared comments, and the meeting was adjourned at 12:31 PM.
Thank you, Dr. Weaver. Next item on the agenda is 249.25, review and approval of business service and finance. We have one recommendation from Ms. Curry.
Thank you. As Ms. Kimberly Polikovich, Executive Director of High School Curriculum and State and Federal Programs, presented at the December Finance Committee Meeting, we are requesting approval to purchase a simulator. This simulator will be used in our EMT classes at William D. Ford Career Technical Center. If approved, this purchase will be charged to the William D. Ford General Fund Equipment Account and will not exceed an amount of $31,930.
Any questions?
Boy, Annie went up. It was such a Annie. She used to be $6,000.
She does a lot more now.
Yes.
A lot more. Do you have any other questions? All right. Seeing none, Ms. Heinz, if you can take the roll. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Support, there we go. Ms. Heinz?
We have Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes. Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
President Gray?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Next item on the agenda is 250.25, review and approval of human resources. This is Dr. Feeley, but it's Ms. Toko.
First of all, I'd like to recommend the hiring of Mr. John Ross as the new assistant principal at Wayne Memorial High School. John's education, he has a bachelor's from Michigan State in mathematics and English, a master of arts from Michigan State in teaching and curriculum, an Ed Leadership Master of Arts from Eastern Michigan University. His, his certificates include a Michigan Administrator Elementary and Secondary Administrator K-12 cert, professional teaching certificate, K, or 612 mathematics and 612 in English. His experience, professional experience include the Consortium College Preparatory High School, where he was a teacher and department head, Crestwood Public Schools, where he was a teacher, Michigan Collegiate High School, where he was a teacher and department head, Pontiac Public Schools, where he was a teacher, and Wayne Westland Schools, where he was a teacher and his most current position before the assistant principal promotion, hopefully, was an instructional coach. So John is on our team, and we're excited to have him and to be hiring, hiring from within.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Do you have support?
Support.
There we go. Do I have any questions?
Is he here?
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Stand up, John.
John, you got any comments?
After we get the roll.
I'm sorry.
Do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions. I'd just like to hear from him.
All right. Seeing no questions, Ms. Heinz, if you can take the roll.
All right. So we did the support, all the good stuff, the support.
Yep.
All right, we're good. All right, Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes. Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
President Gray?
Yes.
Motion carries, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. Give my like Oscar acceptance speech. Thank you, Ms. Curry and your team for giving me this opportunity and the board. Thank you to Principal Cory Gildersleeve and the administrative team at Wayne Memorial. They've been giving me some excellent on-the-job training already. And thank you to the amazing teachers and staff at Wayne Memorial High School. Many of them are here tonight. They're a very passionate and united group. That passion and unity is what brings them here this evening, and I appreciate them. Very excited for this opportunity and being able to serve this community. This is exactly where I want to be. Thank you.
If you want to go back up for a minute.
I just want to say, congratulations on your, on your journey to the dark side. I notice you have an appropriate suit for that.
I showed up for you tonight.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good now, okay.
All right, next item on the agenda is 251.25, which is review of Board of Education. The first item on here is Board Officer Position Interest. According to Section 3.2A of Board Operating Procedures, in December, prior toward, to the January organizational meeting, the Board's Secretaries shall poll trustees and newly-elected trustees for interest in officer positions. This polling will be done in open session, so we're going to do that tonight. Ms. Heinz, if you want to poll the members that will be here in January.
All right. So we have the President's Duties, and the President of the Board will preside in all meetings of the Board and conduct meetings in a manner prescribed by these bylaws. The President will prepare the agenda for the Board meetings in consultation with the Superintendent and may perform such other tasks as reasonably necessary to facilitate the Board meetings. The President or he or her designated functions as the official spokesperson for the Board. The President will be the official recipient of the correspondence directed to the Board and will provide copies of the school district-related correspondence to all Board trustees at his or her discretion to the Superintendent. Board trustees who receive the school district-related correspondence that are not addressed to the President will promptly provide a copy to the President. President will sign all papers and documents required by law or otherwise authorized by the action of the Board. When signing documents, he or she will make sure the entire Board is aware of all documents that have been signed. The President, on the behalf of the Board, is authorized to consult with the Superintendent and/or school district's legal counsel prior to presentation of an issue to the full Board. So are we doing the nominees, or are we just going down and seeing what each one wants to do, or?
I would have to.
Okay.
It's the secretary.
All right, so, anyone interested in being the President of the School Board? Fred Weaver? Any of the new appointees interested?
I'm sure.
Okay. And I, Melody Heinz, would love to be the President of the Wayne Westland Board of Education. So I'm putting my name in the hat, and I'm working with the community members as we speak. Anybody else is looking to be the President?
Well, I would like to make a nomination, nomination. No, I can't do that.
Tonight is just polling interest.
Oh.
Somebody else is interested, they can.
Yes. Speak now, forever hold your peace.
But we, nominations can happen in January.
I'm not interested, but I want Kim to be interested. So I want Kimberly May to say that she interested in being the President of the Wayne Westland School Board.
You have like a zero tolerance policy on policy or something? Yes, I'm interested.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You make me happy.
Okay. So we have Vice President Duties. The Vice President will have the powers and the duties of the President during the temporary absence or disability of the President. The Vice President will also have such other powers and duties as the Board may from time to time to determine. So is there any interest in the Vice President seat?
Dr. Weaver.
Anyone else? Any newcomers?
Luana, Abney Mitchell.
Anyone else? Speak now, forever hold your peace. All right, next we have the Secretary Duties. Be the chief election officer of the district, who may delegate this duty to other members of the district staff. Act as the clerk at the meetings of the Board. Record and sign the minutes of meetings, orders, resolutions, and other proceedings of the Board proper, proper record books. Prepare reports as required by the State Board. Perform other duties required by the law and the Board. Is anyone interested in being the Secretary of the Wayne Westland Board of Education? Any of the newcomers? All right, so we'll leave that position open. Speak now, forever hold your peace, it's closing. And next we have the Treasurer's Duties. Perform such duties as may be authorized by the Board or required by law or appropriate to the duties of the Office of the Treasurer, unless these duties have been delegated by the Treasurer to members of the district staff. Draw and sign orders upon a district's treasury for money to be, and that's it. So is anyone interested in being the Treasurer of the Wayne Westland Board of Education? One to my left, to my right, new members?
That's the book that I don't have.
Okay, well, we'll leave it open, and we'll just see what happens in January.
All right, thank you, Ms. Heinz.
Thank you.
Next is, next is something I want to present to the board. It's, and so we have a number of committees that, on the board. Our two standing committees are finance and policy, and then we have also formed ad hoc committees from time to time, such as one to deal with the sale of our properties, as well as superintendent evaluation. I would like to propose to this board at my last meeting tonight to form another standing committee dedicated to student achievement. I'll be talking about this more in my closing statement tonight, but I would like to make a motion tonight for us to form a standing committee that would meet monthly, the same as we do with finance, the same as we do with policy, to get updates from the Superintendent on student achievement and to work with the student, the Superintendent on formulating a plan to increase the student achievement of our district. So, I made the motion, do I have a second?
So moved.
Okay. Do you have any questions? All right, seeing none, Ms. Heinz?
May I make a comment?
Oh, Ms. May?
Thank you. So it's not a question, but just a comment. I really appreciate you lifting this. This was something that I lifted my first year on the Board, and so I just love that this is now coming full circle so that we, as a Board, can not only be engaged, but learn more, right? Because we have to learn along with the staff, along with our students. We've talked a lot about attendance being a barrier. We've also talked about change in demographics. You know, COVID brought about a lot of changes. We need to really talk about what's happening in education, what's the latest research, what things do we need to support our teachers with, what supports do we need to give to our families? So thank you so much for lifting this committee.
Yeah, that's a really good one.
Thank you. Ms. Abney Mitchell?
And I also would like to thank you for lifting this committee because it has been so important to me since I've been on the Board to let this be a school. This is a school. I also know that it's a business, but it's a school, and, and we are here for students. And it is so important for us to know what's going on with the students, and that's why I appreciate that y'all supported me when I asked the interim superintendent to have the students, the schools come out here and make a presentation, because we need to know what's going on in the schools. We need to visit the schools and be part of it. But as far as the committees, I would like for each committee that we have that is able to be a group to be a group, which our policy committee, I think that should be a group workshop. And to get policies, we have sent policies to the committee, people on the policy committee, and hasn't heard nothing back. In order to get these groups to work as they supposed to work, they need to become a workshop. I'm the Board member that suggested that we have a board workshop before our meetings. So that's what I would like to see, you know, or even have another day and have a workshop and talk about the business. And that way, when we have these meetings, they will run more smoothly because we would come together as a Board. And when we have our community and our students and our teachers sitting out there wanting to make a comment, it don't have to be two and three hours in the meeting, because we already have had a workshop and have had the opportunity to go over the agenda before the meeting.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Well, my comment is, I'm certainly in favor of, of this issue. This, this after all is the reason we're all here. This is the whole reason we're here. So to now come up with a committee to review what really is essentially our responsibility from the beginning, but I'm all in favor of it because this is what we need to do. But I'm all in favor of it because this is what we need to do. We need to all be on the same page, not at different stages of growth here. But I really think that this should wait for the new Board. What you're doing tonight by a vote are two people that aren't going to be here are going to obligate two people that are going to be here to meetings for the next 12 months. And I heard Miss May say something about student achievement at the last, at the last meeting. I was very happy to hear it. And I think that that should be our focus. But I think that the new Board that's going to assemble should be deciding for themselves how we're going to address this, what way we're going to address this. We've had, we've met, as you said, Finance has met this way. And we found out we didn't have $17 million and we found out we did have $30 million all through the time Finance was meeting on it. So that might be the way to address this. But I think that the Board that's going to be addressing it should be deciding too. I won't vote against it, though.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. And I do understand your concerns with that and I actually have thought that through. However, I feel that student achievement has taken a backseat too long and I don't, at this time, want to put it off for one more month. And I don't see, either the new members shaking their heads no on that. So while I do completely understand what you're saying with that, I think this is a priority and there's no better time to deal with this than now. Do you have any other comments?
I'd just like to say that, Ms. May, you are on point with that. Ms. Abney Mitchell, this is very important because a lot of our Superintendent's evaluations on student achievement. So if we all work together, you know, step by step, we can take the district in the right direction.
Seeing no further comments. Ms. Hines, if you can take the roll.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
President Gray?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
All right. The next item on the agenda is Citizens Comments on Non-Agenda Items. If you did submit a form and you're in one of the overflow rooms, if you can head over to the main room at this time. The first person I have is Shannon Pippa.
I asked my son to come to stand with me, to support me. Good evening. My name is Shannon Pippa and I've been rated as a highly effective teacher at Wayne Memorial for the past 11 years. I have, sorry, let me take a breath. I have taught in Room 212 at Wayne since September 2000. I spent that school year student teaching in the Social Studies Department and was lucky enough to be hired by the District that spring. I shared with Ms. Curry and Dr. O'Feely this evening that at the end of my student teaching, I saw a bunch of teachers retire who had been at Wayne High for their whole career and I was so overwhelmed with the respect that was shown to those staff that I, I knew then that I wanted to be at Wayne for my whole career. Over the past 24 years, Room 212 has become my second home. And until last Monday, I anticipated spending my entire career in that classroom. On Monday last week, though, I was devastated to discover that people in the HR department decided to post my job while I am out on a medical leave fighting pancreatic cancer. Thankfully, I received word around 5:00 PM today that the District does not intend to interview for or fill my position at this time. So I'm very thankful that I can have some peace of mind about my employment while I focus on my health. It was too late for me to rewrite my speech after my conversation with District Leadership. And I think it's important for people to hear about my experience so that this does not happen again. I'm not sure what would have happened to me without my large network of support from former students, current and former colleagues, and the community at large. I'm so thankful for the outpouring of support I have received over the past 24 hours. And I'm so grateful to my union leadership who have been unflagging in their support for me this fall, but especially over the last week. So here's my original speech. In March of 2023, I spoke to this Board about a similar issue when another teacher in the District was involuntarily transferred upon their return from a medical leave. Back then, I pointed out that being allowed to do something doesn't make it the right thing to do. And I told you about two previous medical leaves that I was forced to take due to cancer diagnoses and how during neither situation did I fear for my job at the same time that I was fighting for my life. At no time during those leaves did anyone in administration or HR suggest to me that I risked my position by undergoing life-saving medical treatment. It was apparently, or maybe it was, I don't know, it's not clear, a standard policy of the District to post jobs for people during a medical crisis. It seemed like it was not a standard policy during those leaves. Because supporting a dedicated teacher in a time of crisis is the right thing to do. Finally, when I spoke to you last March, I never imagined needing to come before you to plead my own case. And yet here we are, or here we were.